Okay, Ms. Tina, roll call.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Here.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Okay, now here, if everybody had a chance to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, everybody's satisfied with it?
I move. Minutes be approved as written.
Okay. You got a second? You need a roll call on? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay. I hear no, no. Okay, uh, proclamations and recognition of citizens for the mayor, I don't reckon he's got anybody that's, uh, am I correct? He's not here if you don't. Okay, uh, next we'll have a communication from the city administrator, Mr. Fincham.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Uh, the first thing on my agenda is, um, it's your pleasure, we need to set a budget workshop for later this month. We, uh, we've been working on the budget, uh, the last month or so. Tina's worked really hard on it, done a good job. Uh, we've been through it with all the department heads, with their proposed budgets and discussing them with them, made some adjustments. And so, we, we're ready to put, to hand it over to you to look at and discuss, and so we need for you all to set a date, uh, to have a budget workshop so we can get into, get into further into that process.
Are you gonna tell us when?
Well, that's- Is it ready now?
For the most part, yeah. But we've still got a few little odds and ends to do with it, but for the most-
You'd like to have workshop to discuss all this, right?
Well, for you all, yes, sir. For you all to get it to you and so y'all can have time to study it and then come in and have a meeting.
Tina, would you like to come up with the dates or bring those some out?
Um, well, how about the 19th of this month or the 26th? Those are both on Tuesdays, which is your regular meeting night. Um, either night would be fine.
When will we get it? We'll get it prior to that meeting now?
Yes.
Okay. 26th would be great with me.
Has anybody got any problem?
I move.
Mike, or you? You can't be here.
Well, what about the other date?
19th.
19th?
Neither.
I'm gonna have to come one of-
Well, that's gonna-
(laughing)
When you work for them, it's-
How about May 3rd? May 3rd. Get to them by Friday.
May 3rd.
If there's any changes-
It has to be in-
The 26th might be better. That way we can clear the last few items.
Yeah, 'cause I'd like for y'all to have it and to study it. I only give you there to look at it.
You could give it to Mike too, can't you? And let him be looking over too.
And it don't have to be on a Tuesday. I mean, we could do the-
You know-
You could do the 21st. That'd be next, that'd be a week from Thursday.
21st. Yeah, that'd work.
That'd work.
Does that work for you, Mike?
That'd work.
If you ever get a day off?
How about the 28th? How about when? Aren't you working?
You pick a day.
Well, you the only policeman they've got over there.
He's the only one that has it worse.
Uh, looks like May 3rd would probably work for him.
Well, Tina, is that, is that a little late for y'all though? That's the only thing you're trying to keep-
Yeah, we're trying to keep it, I mean, we can do that, but that just puts it a week before, 'cause we want it, we need to have the first reading in May to keep us on schedule to be, for it to go into effect July 1st. If not, you'll have to have a call meeting to, to address it. So, our goal always is to have the first reading at the May meeting and the second reading and the, uh, the public hearing at the June meeting, and that way it goes into effect on time, July 1st. And so, we really need, I mean, we can do it that way. It just starts, the further you get down the road with a workshop, if you all wanna make changes or want us to make changes, then that starts putting us into a narrow window.
We could still get him, uh-
See, now, will we get the apps, uh, the submission from the different department heads and the both?
Yes, sir.
That's what-
Same as last year.
Everything, it's, yeah, we do it the same way every year. It's line item, it's got all the changes, it's got anything that was asked for, it'll all be in.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's a lot, that's a lot to go-
It's a lot to go, right. Exactly.
Well, if it be 26th, they give you more, is it 20th?
No, May 3rd. The 3rd, May 3rd. Unless you can work out a date, um, this month, a different day.
Well, tell us a date, maybe this month.
Well, what works for you, Mike? I mean, what, what days this month work for you?
25th.
Uh, Thursday and Friday this week.
Now, there's no way on that day.
I'm just getting the point now where I'm, I'm off on weekends and I work through the week.
Okay. Well, it's up to y'all. I mean, we, if y'all wanna do that, we can try to make that work.
25th can't be there if you can't-
Did we do it early in the morning?
I do, Monday, the 25th.
25th.
That sound right.
Yeah, they're up there. What days at home?
Monday.
Yeah, they're up there.
At what time?
With your usual time?
25th, it does the time.
5:30?
Yeah, 5:30, yeah. Okay.
25th, what did you say? That 25th and then what?
At 5:30. I just make sure the same time.
'Cause he has to work that day, so.
Okay.
All right. And that way we'll get it to you in, uh, the week before, so you'll have plenty of time to study it. And then any questions you have, you can call Tina or I, and, uh, we'll, you know, we'll go over it with you, and then with the workshop, you can, you know, we'll hash it out. Okay, thank you. Uh, the second thing I have, uh, and this is some good news that was unexpected. Uh, each year since I've been down at City Hall the past three years, I've had a meeting around this time of year with TDOT and the railroad. And, of course, their goal is to improve safety along the railroad downtown. And each year, they have asked that we close crossings and one-way streets. And every year, I have adamantly opposed that. And so, uh, this year, we started down that same path again, and when they seen that the city's position was gonna still be, that we weren't gonna one-way streets and closed crossings, they did make a, a substantial offer that we can't refuse, because it basically cost us nothing. Uh, you know, and part of the, the signalization plan that we're waiting on TDOT to do over on Broadway, they're gonna do the two lights that are remaining over there, the two old lights. And we still, once those lights are done, it still leaves this light on Main Street here at the depot. Okay, that is not a part of their plan, because that is not on the state highway. So, it's always been the case that if we maintain that light, if we keep it, we're the ones gonna have to pay to upgrade it. We've always known that, and we've alw- and we've been factoring that in to our financial plans down the road. Well, what TDOT has agreed to do, to, to, because they've not been able to do anything for the past couple of years to improve the safety down here, they have offered, and, and ultimately, you know, we've told them, well, we're waiting on the engineering to come back, 'cause ultimately, y'all have to be good with it too. But they've offered to, to put this light up. And so, um, they said that they, it's gonna be, now, it, it's gonna be pretty complicated, a complex light. It's just not gonna be one light over like it is now. It's gonna be a large system that works with the trains and all that. But they're gonna put the traffic light in, and we're gonna have signal, a whole new signalization project here at this intersection, and they're gonna pay for it. And so, that, that is, that, that's good news, because you're talking about, you know, a 200, 250 thou- and this is gonna be more than that, but you were looking at $200, $250,000 to upgrade that thing, and now, the state's gonna do it. It's gonna be much more elaborate than what we were gonna do. They're gonna put up new signage, new markings up and down the street. Uh, this street is already, uh, on Ben's list to be resurfaced this year, and so, we're gonna try to make that happen right away, so they can put their, when they come in with their project, they can get their markings on the new asphalt, and we don't come in after they do that and run asphalt over the top of it. So, Ben brought that up at the meeting, and so, we wanna make sure we coordinate that, so that doesn't get messed up anyway. But that, that, that is some great news. Now, I haven't seen the engineering yet on it. The engineers were there, uh, and they seemed to get real excited that they finally were gonna have a project to actually do downtown. And, uh, excuse me. I, I mean, it's, it's something we fell into that, that they had to do, they felt like they had to do something to improve the safety downtown near the railroad, and that's basically the only thing that they could bring to the table that we would go for. 'Cause we wasn't gonna go for closing crossings, and we weren't gonna go for one-way streets. And so, uh, looks like we're gonna get a free traffic light right here that will be as nice or nicer than the other ones that they're gonna be putting in over on Broadway. So, I, that's, that's, that's a, that's something extra that we didn't anticipate that, that is good news.
We need a motion or anything on that, Mr. Fincham?
No, sir, not, wait till we get the, not till we get their engineering plan and their proposal.
James, did they mention anything about that wall that's down through there and proving it? Now, that's a real, uh-
Uh.
They, you talk about- Railroad ties-
It looks like the concrete stack down along, no.
Yeah.
No. They didn't bring anything like that up. The only thing they bring up, and they've done it consistently the past three years, is making this street one-way and the other street the opposite way and closing a couple of crossings. That's what they wanna do every year, and then we always take the position, we're not gonna do that. That, that creates too much, uh, confusion and congestion downtown, and so, we don't, you know, we don't, we don't go along with it. And so, but no, they, they've never brought those things up.
They're, you know, they're getting in bad shape.
Yeah. They're pretty good about, I mean, you know, about replacing stuff. Um, you know, we can kinda check on that and see what, you know, ask them about that.
'Cause boy, I mean, it looks bad. Now, like, you know, that's one of the things I'd like to see, you know, just to clean up, you know, that was really-
We'll, we'll, uh, we'll get in contact with the railroad and ask them about that, what's their maintenance plan on those things and stuff. We'll, we'll check on that.
'Cause it's really getting in bad shape.
Um, next, uh, we have a request, and, uh, y'all have it, I think, in the front of your package. It's from the, the folks from the farmer's market, and they're here. Um, they are asking that we allow them, instead of just being up there at the Tanner Building a couple of days a week this summer, uh, they would like permission to be there, like, every day if they, if there's interest and vendors coming and setting up and, uh, being available to the public to, to sell their goods. They, they would like the ability to, to set up every day this summer if, if y'all don't have a problem with it.
Are they gonna have somebody there, Mr. Fincham, that's gonna be over? I mean, is somebody responsible for it?
Well, Ms. Ms. Hicks, she's here. You, she can address that. She's, she's matched on-
Is that Rick?
Yes, and, and the reason we are asking this is because I've gotten, um, I've gotten calls from people who have said that they would be, they would be willing to make a commitment to, to being there, but, yeah, either, usually, I try to be, to be there. I'm not gonna be there every moment of the day, and, um, and we do all the things, you know, we have, keep it for state kid on premises and, um, and some of the other stuff, so, yeah.
Oh, as long as y'all feel responsible, know who's coming and going and stuff, that's, is that what you need to know?
Yes, sir. Well, and also, we, and it's been addressed, she's, Regina has been working with her, um, is about the, just make sure they got the liability insurance policy that holds the city safe from any, anything that might happen.
Right. And we've done that every year. We come with the expanded days, I will have to, um, but, but the insurance costs change every year, so, but I wanted to wait and make sure that it was okay before I submitted anything to the insurance company and got a price.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem with it, but I just wanted to make sure y'all were good with it.
I move. We approve that request, Mike. It takes a motion.
Do you have to vote on it, Tina, or just say yes or no?
I think if you-
All in favor, say aye. Good for you. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
The only, the last thing I have is that, uh, that, uh, Rocky's been working hard for about a week to, to get all of our surplus property, or at least a, a large portion of it, on Gov. deals. And so, we put it, we put it on our Facebook page and our website and all that good stuff to let people know that it's out there, but just again, tonight, another way to, uh, to publicize that. And for y'all's information, we do have a large number of items currently at auction on Gov. deals. And that's all I have, Mr. Vice Mayor.
James?
Yes, sir.
What percentage are we running ahead on, uh, sales tax this year?
Um-
You know, Tina?
It's about 12%, I think. I think it's in the neighborhood of 12, I think it's right in the neighborhood of 12%.
Okay.
Are we talking about a dollar amount? Or these are collections or what?
We, we look, you're talking about a-
A dollar amount? 12% increase in the dollar amount?
12%, you said 12% over last year?
Yeah, it's around 12%.
Is that what you're talking about? Yes.
Yeah.
What, I don't know what that amounts to in dollars, do you, Tina?
We were, we were looking at that today.
On the fiscal year?
Yes.
It's 255,000, but if you look at calendar year, calendar year 15, we had 3.6. Calendar year 14 had 3.1. You're looking at almost a $500,000 increase in sales tax revenue that was not expected in from one calendar year to the other. And when we were looking, James requested, and we did some research on where the sales tax is going this year, it is now trending to flatline. We're not gonna continue that.
The first quarter this year's not, it's been flat, but now-
Up 16.
But the first two quarters of the fiscal year, it was doing real good. It's up about 12% the first two quarters, but then, well, on the average overall, it's about 12%. It was up really good until we hit, uh, January, February, March of this, this year, and it's, it's been flat this year. But now, nearly all of the calendar year last year, which covers half of each fiscal year, it was really good. And we, and that's, and that's created some good things for us, uh, that we can get into more when we get into our, um, budget workshop. Uh, you wanna see, and I think, um, the vice mayor's wanting to talk about some stuff that we'll touch on it, uh, it's, it's, it's put us in a good position, especially with the, the tax anticipation note.
Okay. Thank y'all.
One of the things that I was, wanna speak to, and I know, like, it gets tired of me saying, complimenting our city employees, but I look and see, somebody from every department here, and I don't think our people in our town realize what all the jobs you all do, and I'm talking about everybody, the city hall bunch, I had everybody named out, not everybody, but they're just department head and stuff. And when I say this, I think it's come from all of us, you know, when I say it, but all of us have said the same thing, how, how much we appreciate what y'all do. You know, some people wanna gripe at you about some taxes, but I was looking, and I understand that, but that's not worth, but also look at some of our, uh, stuff that we've been able to do with that. You know, one of the things, like you're talking about, paying down on our tax anticipation note. People says, you know, wasting money. We're, we're not wasting money. We're trying to invest some money and, and trying to, we get, we're gonna get back more than what we're investing. And I thought that was, been smart. For the people flock from, uh, Parks Recreation, you know, they'll come to you and say, "I really thank you for helping us get our mowers, helping us get our building back in shape." Helping get, you know, when you go through all this stuff, the people in the police department come to you and say, "We really thank you." And it's not thanking us, it's thanking the people and citizens of Newport for sacrificing a little bit to help us get caught up on things we've been not had in the last 15 years. You know, the, the police department got their, uh, new, uh, police cars and stuff. The, the city garage out there's got new fork lifts for their, uh, sanitation department. They've got new backhoe stuff, and these are things that's been needing done for a long time. They said, you know, we, we, our equipment has just worn out. We're spending more money on, on repairs than we are on what the equipment's worth. And I think it, like y'all, back in, uh, 15 to 20 years ago, when you had your mowers, and, and there are people that take care of their equipment, it, but everything that's like the rest of us, we just wear out. So, I, I just wanted to make that comment. I'd like to brag on the department heads and doing, I wanna thank the citizens of Newport for trying to understand, let us get through this hump, let us get things paid off, paid down, and get back on a regular track. I see the people from the fire department here. I see the job that, uh, Mark and Gary does. I, if, you'd have to read about what they do if you're just an average citizen and don't take the time to read it, but I, y'all do a lot more than what you get credit for. And, uh, Tina, I wanna thank you for helping us keep up with our finances, knowing what we can spend, what we can't spend. You're very knowledgeable and we really appreciate that. So, and, and Mr. Ramsey back there with the fire department, him and Mr. Reagan, the things that, like, you know, the things y'all been needing, repairs on your building, some of your fire trucks, your equipment, your vehicle and stuff that you've not had in a long time, the stuff's just worn out. And then thank you for the job you're doing, uh, Lisa, appreciate what you do. I, I don't need to just keep on each person, but thank all of you for the job you do, okay? One of the things too now, uh, and take real quick, uh, people wants to get started, that you gave the money to the, to make Moonshine, that's, that's another thing, for the truth in that. Went to the partnership on investing in a, in a, in a building, and that we will get more money back with the taxes and stuff, uh, when it's paid off than what we got best of it, plus you still got some buildings. Then you still got some things, it's downtown Newport that I think people may build off of this, you know, they've said they were anyway. And another thing I'd like to touch on real quick, I think Mark Hill's working on trying to get our memorial building straightened up.
Yeah, that, that got left off my list. I need to get back to that when you get done.
We've got some people here, and they, they've contacted some contractors and stuff, even though it's not our responsibility yet, it's gonna be a liability to the city if something's not done pretty quick, so you working on that? Is that-
Well, what I, what I, and I apologize, that got left off my list, 'cause we just added that after I spoke with Terry, uh, yesterday. Uh, what I would like for y'all to do, um, I, was give me permission and appropriate the funds. We, we, I've had Mark, Mark's been heading it up. Um, we think in the, from $3,000 to $4,000 that we can get the, the debris, the rest of the debris off the roof that's blowing off, and we can secure the other side of that roof to maybe where the wind won't get under it. And, uh, under an emergency of being at a threat to public safety, we had to go down over the weekend, the police and, and the fire, and everybody had to block off those streets again, 'cause stuff was flapping on the roof. And when we're starting to have to block streets routinely, because we're worried about something falling on somebody's head, then I think we, then I think we're justified, and Terry has agreed, and, uh, in taking it as a public safety emergency, uh, and going onto the property and removing the threat that's there. And it's, it's our belief that we can get it done in the $3,000 to $4,000 range, and I'd like y'all, uh, to give us permission to do that and, and permission to spend the money, to appropriate the money out of the, out of the sales tax.
That's one of the biggest gripes that I've heard a long time, is that on the memorial building, you know?
Well, who did that? I mean, what did they do? Did they fail to put screws in the slats on there? Is that-
They put screws in the slats, and then they nailed the slat, well, they nailed the slats to the roof, to the roof, and then they put screws in the tin to the slats, which was, you know, was not a very smooth move.
What do you think about them, Jackie?
Uh, we met with the, this newly formed committee that, uh, the Cock County Veterans Association, that is kinda took it, trying to take it under their wing, but I think they're struggling to really get formed. Uh, they talked about the group that did that, 'cause that question came up. And the, it was, uh, a local group that has gone out of business, and so, they have no way to, no recourse to go back after them, uh, as far as standing behind the, the work. And so, uh, it was put on, it was not put on properly. I mean, everybody, there's a consensus on that. Everybody you talk to says that that, you know, was not the way to do it. It should've been, that screws should've been done across the board. Really and truly, uh, it's a, the opinion of a lot of people, that they, what they did, they put the tin roof on top of the, the old shingles, and, uh, there was a lot of bad, probably bad boards and, and sheeting underneath that. And so, it really, to really be done right, it should've been stripped and re-sheeted, and then a new roof put on top of that.
And pieces on it all the way down the tin where the air couldn't get under it.
Right.
The biggest fault, once it starts, it just keeps going.
Right. And that's what we wanna try to do with the south side of the roof that's still intact, is try to anchor that down a little better to where the wind may, probably, possibly prevent the wind from getting under it. And so, yeah, I, I, that was not, I done went right on. That was, I didn't get that on my list, 'cause we just talked yesterday about it. But, uh, but I, you know, I feel it's justified for us to do it. I know we're, you know, it's not our building, you know, a lot of people think it is. Gary has spent a lot of time on social media informing people that have been on our, critical of us, that we're, why are we allowing, not taking care of our building? It's not our building, it belongs to the American Legion. Uh, we don't want anything to happen to it, but there's only certain things we can do, and, and because this is a public threat, uh, then we have the authority to go in and try to do something. But we only have enough, we can only do enough to abate the threat. We can't just go in and put a whole new roof on. But we can, we do have the authority to go in and eliminate the threat, and that's what I'd like to do.
I make a motion, we, uh, give him, James and his staff, the ability to take care of business and taking care of this roof.
Uh, excuse me, uh, just for a procedural matter, because we're spending public money, I would suggest we make a motion to add this issue to the agenda, and, uh, vote on that issue first, and then we can take it up and entertain your motion.
I'll make a motion, we add this to the agenda tonight for an emergency vote. Six.
They got a motion, second.
We need a vote.
Vote, Kate Tina.
Yes, sir.
A vote call.
Okay. See, Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Then we can entertain the vote then.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Do you wanna go ahead and make the-
I'll make the motion that we, uh, give James the ability and his staff the ability to take care of the roof at the American Legion building to possibly present any type of public endangerment.
Can we remember that for 5,000?
I was gonna say, is there a limit we wanna put on there? It's $5,000. You said 4, but you wanna say 5, and I'm sure you'll spend it frugally, what you're gonna spend.
That'd be fine. I appreciate, we hope to do it. They, they just, the guesstimates was like 30, 34, 35.
Sometimes you can't tell exactly. You might run into some problems and then they pay it.
Now, we're gonna haul the debris off. That was one of the questions, you know? If they get it on the ground, we'll haul it off, and that reduces the cost, 'cause we have the ability to do that. So, we're gonna do as much ourselves as we can, but I'm not putting my people on that roof.
I make the motion. Second.
Vote call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I'm glad you mentioned that, because it, like I say, this just come up yesterday, 'cause I, I got a call yesterday morning that the street had been blocked all weekend, and, and that's when I called Terry and asked him what could we do, and so, it didn't-
They've been several people calling me and wanting to get up there with a bunch of boys and do that, and I said, "You can't do that."
Well, they've called me, and, "Oh, you could take the fire department ladder truck down there and put people on that roof." And, "No, you can't do that. You can't put people to doing stuff they're not trained to do, and that's a, that's not, that's not what that equipment's for, and we don't have anybody that's trained to be on a roof." And so, I'm not, I'm not putting our people in harm's way.
Put some cause up for them.
No matter how worthy the cause is, we're not gonna put somebody up there to fall. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Is that all you've got?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I, appointment to the board, commission meeting, uh, there's not anybody else? I, I'm on like Ray Caffrey, he said like to stay on there. Anybody got any problem with Ray Caffrey standing on there?
No.
He's been on there for years, they say he does a good job, so.
I'll say it's your move.
Okay, Tina.
I'm here, but, uh, we've got several things in work that, that we haven't confirmed yet, so I really would not wait for them to report later.
Okay. All righty. Appreciate it. Can you thank the library board?
Yes, we do.
Hope you do.
Y'all know that, uh, Cock County Library Board has four libraries in the county that we manage, Newport, Cosby, Parrishville, and Del Rio. And we thank you for giving us an opportunity to appeal for you today, and, uh, I have asked the question, our board treasurer, to come and make a proposal to you. So, Sarah?
Thank you for seeing us. We have not received an increase from the city in over eight to 10 years for our library fund, and we would greatly appreciate it if you could give us a 10 to 12%
treasurer to come and make a proposal to you, so Sarah?
Thank you for seeing us. We have not received an increase from the city in over eight to ten years for our library fund, and we would greatly appreciate it if you could give us a ten to twelve percent increase in our funds this year. The county gave us ten thousand dollars two years ago. We plan to go to Parisville and ask for money, and we plan to go back to the county and ask for some money. We can't meet our budget with the way prices are going up, and, and the things that we have to pay, unless we have some more money coming in someplace.
Yes, some expected, unexpected drops in revenue?
I'm sorry?
Uh, some unexpected drops in revenue?
Yes, yes. We had book sales, and all of a sudden, nobody's buying books, so we're not getting less twenty-five hundred dollars we had to take right out of the budget.
Ten to twelve percent equates to how much?
All right, a ten percent increase would be fifty-six hundred twenty-five dollars. A twelve percent increase would be sixty-seven hundred dollars and fifty dollars, sixty-seven fifty.
Is that for the year sixteen, seventeen, or is that this year?
I'm sorry?
Are you meaning that this year?
We would love to have it this, we, this year we received from the city fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and that's what we've received for about ten years. I picked a good time, this is budget.
We're not gonna wait till after workshop?
Well, I think that'd be, yeah, I think it'd be proper to discuss that. We have had, as you will see, we have had multiple requests for increases this year from organizations, and so, yeah, I think that, that would be my suggestion, because, now, if you're wanting to think about doing money immediately, that's up to y'all, but for next year, uh, I think we need to just incorporate that into the, the budget proposal, and y'all, because y'all are gonna have to look at all of those, and there's multiple increased requests over last year, so.
Has, uh, Parisville, do they contribute?
Parisville does not give us anything.
Can we ask, can you ask for their?
I have, we're asking them now, we're in the process of asking.
You mentioned you get, this county gave ten thousand two years ago, um, are you willing to go knock on their door again?
Oh, yes.
So maybe we could not split, necessarily split the difference, I'm asking you to go knock on their doors, and, uh, but I think it needs to be in our workshop, what needs to be talked about here, but.
And I really appreciate the efforts y'all are making, Sarah, on what y'all do and stuff, because libraries, people don't realize how much goes on that library at Parisville, you don't know, you go in there some, and people using internet and all that, that don't have access any other way, y'all do a tremendous job, and like Mr. Fancher said, it's gonna be a lot of things start coming up here, and I feel like, don't mind a bit to do it maybe, but we need to be able to talk intensively, to see if, uh, where Tina is in the workshop, the money we've got, and seeing how many, everybody else wants money too, so you don't have any problem with us waiting, do you?
Last year, Del Rio got internet, fast internet service. We were the second last, uh, library in the state of Tennessee to get broadband internet service. The broadband goes as far as the library, and that's it. It took AT&T two years to pull the line from twenty-five seventy across the railroad track to the library. You know, you can't operate computers now if you don't have internet service, and we have a lot of people that go in and apply for jobs, they do their schoolwork, at, at library, at Del Rio, the, the, every night you see three or four cars sitting outside the library, using their internet, their laptops or whatever.
They told us in the last meeting I had for the Newport, you tell us, that every school in the county, and they said that's sort of unheard of, every school's got the internet and stuff in our county, and that's something for us to be proud of, we think we're way behind sometimes, maybe we are in some ways, but a lot of ways we're ahead of other counties on what they were doing technology wise, too.
You have to have it now, you know, in college, the kids don't even have to go to classes, they can do their, get their work off the internet, and do their work. It's, it's something we have to have now, and we have to offer to this county. We, we do lots of faxes, we do lots of copies, they make lots of copies, and we make right much money off of those, but by right much, I'm saying less than ten thousand dollars. So that's not a lot of income coming in.
How much money do the county, do they contribute to the library each year?
The county gives, let me put my glasses on, seventy thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
What's that based on? The size of the buildings? I mean?
I do not know.
There's three county libraries and one city library, and we're given fifty-six two fifty, and there's three county libraries giving seventy-one thousand, those?
But you have to remember that the county libraries are open three days a week, from noon to six o'clock in the evening.
I understand that.
That's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Any day that the schools are closed, they're not open, but the city library is open six days a week.
I understand.
So you see the difference in the salaries that come in, and most of the salaries go to Newport.
Okay, I got you, that's fair.
You want to weigh it, Ms. Tina, and see?
I'll make a motion, we add it to the workshop agenda.
Is that, yeah, I'm going to.
You don't have to vote on that, will you?
Okay. Yeah, let's, let's.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You come see us in the libraries.
Appreciate you. Okay, is there any old business, unfinished business?
It's honing, my chest is honing.
Okay, new business, consideration of request for annual event, my Cock County Partnership, we got somebody from the partnership that wants to speak.
Yeah.
Come on up, Linda. Can't stand by turn and hide.
Good afternoon, I just, uh, last year we started the Rhythm on the River, and we would like to have permission to do that again. We actually want to, um, offer another Thursday, starting on June the second. If we start June the second, we'll have every other Thursday all the way through till July, and that's five Thursdays, and that way there'll be something going on for, through the summer for people. And then we also, um, would like permission to use the city hall again, and to use the, our stage that we like, that's the loading dock, but it worked really good for us. And then we also want to, um, just get permission for the, um, Street Festival, which is the first weekend of October, and for our Christmas parade, which is the second weekend of December.
And another thing too, that also, and we do this every year, uh, is waive the parade fee. Uh, we do that every year, we've done that every year for them, where they don't have to pay a fee to do the Christmas parade.
We need to vote on that, Tina?
Yeah.
Much might make a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, Bob?
Second.
Mr. Fancher seconding. Vote call, Ms. Tina?
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes ma'am.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you all.
I think the, the, the Rhythm on the River is a new project that, uh, the chamber brought to us last year, uh, the crowds weren't large, but they were enthusiastic. We, I think, uh, the folks that came, I think had a good time, uh, we got a lot of good positive feedback from the folks that came, and I, I think that's a good thing, and I'm glad that they're, that they brought that back to the table this year, and are actually gonna do an, an additional one to, uh, over what they did last year.
I think consistency is the key to that, and I've expressed that to them, as long as they continue to do it, I think more people will show us, it'll take time to build it.
Yeah, I think that's right. Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda, discussion of funding requests from Beat the Heat Alliance, uh?
This lady, uh, Tina informed me prior to, just right prior to we got started, that this lady had called and advised she would not be able to make it here tonight, so.
Okay.
Do we do spay and neuter it locally?
Yes, we do it at the animal shelter ourselves.
What's the advantage of, what's the advantage of this outside company? I've read the, the, their performance here, but what's the, why do we need an outside agency to come in to do what we're already doing?
Well, you know, the lady's never spoken with me, she spoke with the mayor, um, I mean, any time that your, that your cause is to try to reduce stray animals, I, I support that, and I think it's a worthy cause, but I also think that we do it, uh, ourselves, uh, the, the, the shelter is facing some money crunch issues this year, and I, I think that we need to, my opinion, I support the cause, but it'd be my, my evaluation that we need to, to spend that money spaying and neutering the animals we have at the animal shelter. And that's not trying to, and I, I'm sure it's a great program, but, but there's lots of other organizations that, that could come along and, and ask for that same thing, and it is a worthy thing, but, but I think that, you know, we need to keep, we need to keep pumping the money into our own program.
She's not here for?
But that's a matching grant, though, isn't it?
Yeah, with a Maug Foundation, it'll match up to five thousand dollars, but what I don't get is, they're asking for five thousand dollars to match, but they're only asking City Newport twelve fifty, Cock County twelve fifty, and twenty-five hundred from Hancock County. Where, and this place is based out of Rogersville? I mean, I don't understand the logistics of why they're asking us three, maybe they're just trying to isolate one area. Uh, since we received a thousand dollars from Hawkins County in two thousand fifteen, I mean, where does the Greenvilles of the world, maybe it's another program they got going on with them, I don't know, it's, this doesn't tell.
I'm not familiar with them.
We're not gonna do anything anyways, so. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is, uh?
What are we gonna postpone that on?
Are we, are we voting to?
I said, y'all, I mean, y'all wanna, I mean?
I'm gonna postpone it, we understand it a little better, I, you know? If she, uh, will be, be scheduled for next, next month?
I'll second that.
All in favor to say?
Aye.
Nay.
Who's gonna oppose?
To oppose, I don't see sense in it myself. Well, there, it's not gonna be a big deal in which way, so, uh, discussing property tax decrease, Roger Gribble?
Yes, I would again like to, I'd like to request a fifty-nine cent, uh, decrease in property taxes for the city. I base that on, you know, uh, we have one of the highest municipal property taxes in the state, we have one of the lowest per capita incomes. And I've got, you know, I could show you letters, tell you, get, read you some telephone calls, talk about telephone calls, but, you know, we've got a lot of poor people here, we've got a lot of, uh, people that don't have jobs, and, like I say, we're the lowest, we're the lowest per capita incomes in the state, we're the highest property taxes. I think we need to go, we've done a lot of good things this year with the money, but I think we can do a lot of good things with less.
Me, I think we ought to wait till we have a workshop, so we can be able to discuss all the facts, and ask questions in workshop, see if that's just me, but.
Well, just to, I'm gonna fight you on this a little bit, I, I, I'd rather take a beating than do a ninety-nine cent property tax increase, but we sitting down here and realized that we had some things we wanted to accomplish, and one of them was get rid of the six hundred thousand dollar tax anticipation note, we, and it's already paid off. In your estimation, will we ever have to do that six hundred thousand dollars again if we stay on the path that we're going right now?
No, we're done.
Another thing we want to do, we wanted to provide sufficient cash in the banks to pay the bills. Has there been a position in the past where we fretted about going month to month, whether you're gonna have enough?
Yes.
Are we in a situation now where?
Yep.
But, you know, we, well, let me finish, please. The third thing is, we wanted to be able to pay all our vendors, and these are categories I brought up, and you helped me check these off. We're paying all vendors, and we have no bad credit.
Correct, no holding, no bad credit.
Completed. The fourth thing is, we want to be able, and I thought the most important, the second most important is, is creating a capital fund to be used for things that we've talked about we needed. Is that being completed?
The creation of the capital fund has been completed, but not all capital projects, and we've only scratched the surface of all the projects identified.
We, we need, we, I know we have a ton of capital, uh, projects that need to be done next couple of years, I know we're just talking about the fire trucks and things such as that. I'm putting you in the fire here, do you see us making great progress towards this? I, I would like nothing more than to do that, but we came up with a plan for four years. I think if we detract from it, we're gonna go back to where we might have been, and I heard you flatlining, uh, sales taxes and saying things such as that. And, uh, and one, the major thing is, and I read here, that the question I asked you today in an email from Collesby High School, are we reducing debt? And you said, we're on a pace to reduce a million dollars in debt this year.
Next year.
Uh, next year, okay, okay, I read that wrong.
I'm sorry.
But, no, uh, yeah, that's what it says, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, both understand. But yes, we plan to make some significant strides next year.
Well, that's progress, and I don't know, Roger, if that progress will be sustained if we go back and go, go back to forty cents, uh, decrease.
It's gonna take a little bit of time to get what you talked about, we talked about this stuff in the budget, when we got started, it, it wasn't gonna happen overnight, it was gonna take maybe two and a half, three years to be back, and if you start now with it, you won't get what you set out to be accomplished. I, I feel like, and y'all feel like, and you told me, that you feel like the tax will start going down, but it's just not ready right this moment to start, if that's correct.
Well, I, I think because of the luck of having good sales tax coming in, and some frugal, frugality, is that a word, Ray Snyder, frugality? We've been frugal in our spending, and, uh, unfortunately, because of the tax increase of our property, the, the dollar amounts in the funds are looking better than they've looked in a long time.
Yes.
Is it, can I get an amen out of that?
At least twenty.
And I'm not, and I'm not seeing your time to make light of it, I, I'm, I'm all for that, but I think we take, we'll take two steps back, come talk to me this time next year, and I'll, I'll totally jump on board with it, but right now, I mean, you need to give me some more to fight with, I just, I'm standing up to where I think some progress is being made.
Well, you've got, well, you can't, you can say, we can look at this country, we've got twenty trillion dollars in debt, and then, you know, here we're, we're putting out, an outrageous tax on people that can't afford it. Now, we can do all these great things here in the city, they need it.
I agree.
And, but do we have to do them in one year? We have to do them in two years.
It wasn't done in fifteen years, though, before.
Well, I mean, but we can't go back, mate, eleven, of what happened eleven years ago. And just because we had a group of people that would not raise taxes, because they went out here and promised that, so they could get a seat here. They promised it year after year after year, and everybody's sitting around and letting them do it.
Agreed.
And now we jumped to a dollar. And then the state had to cut it back a penny, and then, uh, but the people in this city cannot afford to pay the property taxes. You might end up with a great looking city here with nobody in it.
That's the way.
Look how houses are selling in this city. They aren't.
Population of Cock County went down one point five percent last year.
Yeah.
I mean?
That was last, yeah.
This past year.
Wait, yeah, wait.
Hamla County went up three point three percent.
Yes.
Sevier County went up three percent. I mean, can we all attribute that to sales ta, or property taxes? I mean, it's, I mean, I'm, I'm with you, dude, I'm with you.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I just think we're gonna take too far of a step back right now.
Yeah, but I tell you, if you, if you're taxing, you're taxing poor people to death, they can't stand.
You're talking to one of them.
Well, I'm one of them too, but you're taxing them dead. They can't afford to move into this city because of that tax rate. I mean, these people, you talk about taking two hundred dollars or three hundred dollars a year from them, you're taking their, uh, money for, uh, medicine away from them, you're taking groceries from them. And I just, you know?
You're preaching the word.
I just don't think it's right to hit them with that much tax, because we sat around here for eleven years, and nobody did anything.
I agree, but also come back to say- I agree, but also come back to say the state comptroller's office...
Connie was here then, James was here, and we did nothing, and we got, you know, and we can't go back and undo that.
True.
But we sure can not put such a burden on these people at one time.
As I said, unfortunately, all the chickens are coming home to roost at one time on us. We've got to try to address the...
Nope, they haven't.
And we've got a couple of projects coming up tonight that we're gonna have to address.
Yeah.
I would love to cut taxes.
I would do, but not now.
If we get sales tax going down here, we have to have something to be able to replace that money, if the latency ever reduces.
I don't know if it's idle threat, I can always remember back in my mind, the, the state comptroller's office saying, "If we don't take care of our business, we're gonna come in and take care of the business for you, and you'll, you'll life at 99 cents for a dollar." Now, is that idle threats? I don't know, I don't, I've ever dealt with the state comptroller's office.
They, they said, they sat there for 11 years and said that, never done that.
Well...
14.
14 years and never done that.
Who are you talking about, the state comptroller's office?
No, the city didn't raise taxes before.
I'm talking about the state, when, when Big Brother speaks, that kinda gets my attention.
Well, they've always been, they've never come in.
Well, is it, was it ever to the point where it was at last year?
It was worse. I mean, we were sitting here kneading backhoes, and we go down the street and buy out, uh, we buy buildings that are worthless.
That's the reason why there's five new people sitting here.
Yeah. I think there's, there, you know, I don't think the people that elected us thought we would come in and raise our taxes a buck, and, uh...
Nor did I.
We didn't, we didn't need to do that.
Well, let me ask you this, and I'll, I'll be quiet after this, we, we've got, we've put a plan in place...
Right.
And it's kinda working, albeit for four years, we could've spread it out to eight years, but I, you know, I, I wanted to see it get done in four years, albeit a drastic measure. What, what's your plan to sustain what we got going on if we drop it down, in this case 65%?
Good question. But we can keep what's going on if we stay, if we drop it down.
Yeah.
You're saying we can.
I, I don't think you can. Well, I just heard her say, "Sales taxes are gonna be flatlined," is that the word you used, or?
They've been flat the first quarter this year, yeah.
And I'm, I'm not, Roger, I'm not trying to bail at you, I just, I just don't see how we can, it's been pretty dang fulfilling to me, go home, look in the mirror and say we've been able to do some things that have helped out, shake your head if you want to, being able to sha- come in and do stuff that needs to be done to help our citizen, or help our police department, or fire department, uh, Tim Dockery's department, Mr. Hicks's department, and I don't think they've had any progress done in the last 10 years, I, I don't know.
We could've done that, we just didn't have to do it as extravagantly.
As what?
As extravagantly.
Yes, much, we didn't have to do that much in one year, what we've done.
You're talking about our accomplishments or our tax rate?
I'm talking about the money we spent. That's what's important, we got 99 cents, I guess we spent it, haven't, or we're getting close to near the end of the price.
What have we done that's extravagant? I mean, I, I, I used the word frugality a minute ago, what, what have we done that's extravagant? I mean, I'm just asking, I'm not...
I think what need to be done.
Well, instead of buying two more, maybe we could buy one this year and one next year.
Last time you bought ones in the 90s, wasn't it 10, 2000?
Well, I'm not talking about, Mike, what they did 14 years ago, I can't help people sitting here on their dunks, but I tell you, hitting people with 99 cents was way too much, and it's still way too much.
Agreed.
You might have a four-year plan to build up a city with nobody in it.
And we might have none.
Pardon?
We might have none, that's, that's a risk, you have to take risks.
I don't, well, I, I don't think you're gonna double it.
We've actually got an eight to 10-year plan, you know, what we looked at, I think what Mr. Fancher is, is alluding to, is we looked at doing away with the tax anticipation note within y'all's term, I think that's what he's, what he's getting at.
It's already been done.
And, and we, you know, we, because of the sales tax, we're gonna be able, we're confident, we're gonna be able to do that this year, and that, instead of getting, doing away with it, phasing it out over three or four years, we're gonna be able to get rid of it in one full swoop. And part of that is, we had a good tax sale on some properties this year that generated some one-time money, uh, the fuel has been down this year, that has, has been a tremendous savings, and that's gonna allow us to retire this tax anticipation note ahead of schedule. Now, everything else is not on a four-year plan, we're pla- getting these buildings repaired that, that have been eaten down by termites, that the roofs are leaking, back here, Nelson came in and I took him on a tour back here one day after it rained, and there wasn't anywhere you could walk back here in the bay where you didn't get water dropping on your head. You can't put anything in there because it ruins it, and we've got leaks all over down here that's gonna have to be plugged constantly back here. You know, you're looking at 250, $300,000 to put a roof just on this building, and our debt ratio's at 54%, and we've gotta get that down in the neighborhood of 30. 30 is the recommended number, and it's what was voted by the city council at one point in time to maintain, and we're 24% above that. So, what Tina did is put into play, just like you talked about, this, uh, this capital project fund at 40 cents out of this tax rate goes into, so we can do all these projects and not, because we can't go any more deeper in debt, and you gotta pay as you go, and when you put a $250,000 roof on, you better have some money in the bank. Now, you can put this roof off four or five years, yeah, you can do that, but you're gonna run the back of the building, and then where you gonna be at? We watched the Tanner Building gym fall down up there and collapse in the street because back in the day, at that time, they wouldn't fix the roof and let it continue to leak till it collapsed, and that's what you get into with water, you have to stop water, and that's just one thing, that's one thing.
But I tell you, you can't fix in four years, it, it took 14 years to get there.
You can't, that's why we have an eight to 10-year plan.
James, go around and look at what the people in Cock County made, do you know what the average per capita rate is in this city?
No, what is it?
Maybe we could sit around and keep going back and forth with this, you know, we need to have a workshop, to me, sit down with it, and if there's some way, but, like I said, we had a plan, I said, we, there's a plan made for more than a couple of years to try to get this stuff straightened up, and, uh, in my opinion, if you feel like we're going backwards, if we don't try to finish up the plan we started with, then we can change after that, to me.
I thought this was gonna be a four-year plan, but the way things are going right now, I could see addressing this this time next year. Now, that's, that's just me talking out loud, I'm not the sharpest knife in the door there, I've ever claimed to be.
I'm not either.
And I mean yours, I think me and yours are hard tried on.
Right, I do too. I think all of us are hard tried, we wouldn't be sitting here if we didn't. Is there anything else we need to, I mean, anything that needs to be said, or stuff? Okay, uh, Mr. Fancher, I'll get your dec-.
I think the interests have been sustained and the scabs are formed, and we don't need to be that kind of...
And we, a consideration of homeowners association grant, Mr. Fancher, would you explain what that is, please?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Did my motion fail for lack of a second?
I didn't even know you asked me that.
Did you hear a motion?
I moved.
I didn't hear you make a motion.
I didn't.
I didn't either.
So, you did make a motion?
Yes, I did.
Yes, sir.
I see that, my friend's not ready.
I didn't see, as if anybody wants to make a second.
And while I'm asking, did it fail for lack of a second?
Does anybody wanna make a second?
I think the motion will fail for lack of a second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, one thing, I don't know where you're applying this, but... One thing that we talked to y'all about last year during the budget process was the possibility of trying a pilot program, and we put $10,000 into the budget for this, this year, and it's in there, and, uh, what that is for, is what we're proposing, is that it's a home assistance grant, and that's not the home grant, it's not to remodels houses, this is a, to try to help, like if someone has a tree that's about to fall on their house, if they've got drainage issues, these are common things that people come to us with wanting help, and we can't help them, we can't go on their properties and do this for them. But there's a similar program in Knoxville, it's much larger in scope, we're just trying to get started, it's a pilot thing, it's never been done here before, and, uh, they, to qualify for it, uh, it follows pretty much the same criteria as the tax abatement, it's for low-income families, uh, home, homeowner occupied, no rental properties, and, uh, it would be a matching grant of $500, if they spend up to $1,000 for, for a project that qualified, uh, then they could, uh, hire a licensed contractor to come in and do the work, and then they could, uh, if they, they would get up to a 50% match from the city. And so what we're wanting to do is, we're wanting to try it out, uh, just with, like I say, right now, trees and drainage, uh, because that's the most common request that we get, and, uh, we'd like to look next year in the budget, trying to expand that, uh, not just for residential, but also for commercial properties. But right now, we'd just like for you to, what we need y'all to do is approve, we, the money's already appropriated, the money was in the budget, $10,000 for last year, so if, if you had, say, that 20 people, uh, qualified, uh, they could get up to $500. Now, if it's less, that, we keep going till the money runs out, but, um, we'd just like for you to approve the, the program itself so we can move forward with it, and that'll be, it'll be done out of the, the city planner's office.
You like, you like the plan, you like what you're hearing about, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's worked really well in Knoxville, of course, they've got, they, they, they do many more, much larger projects, this is a much smaller scale, uh, but it's a way for us to, you know, it's like we've been talking here tonight about the money, it's a way to put some of the money back into these low-income folks that need help with their properties, it's a way for us to legally do that, because we can't legally go on there with our people and our equipment and do this, but this way, we can help them, it's, it's the only legal way we can help them.
Do you need a motion on that, Mr. Fancher?
Yes, sir.
Are these owner-occupied properties?
Yes, sir. Only, uh, it's low income, it's the same, it's the same amount of income, it's what, 28,000, the 690, the same as you would qualify for tax relief, the same exact income, and because we based it on that, we had to find a number, uh, when first had the idea, back before Sherry left, talked to Sherry about it, when Gary came on board, Gary's, uh, been in contact with Knoxville and got some good information on how they do it down there, and, uh, uh, we think it's, naturally, we think it's a good thing, we come up with it, but we think it's a good way to put back into the community and help people where that they need help, and we, it's the only way we can help them.
I hear a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second, roll call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Upstein.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Stein.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda, now, all three of these, that's one of the things I have to say, and if I say something wrong, you tell me.
Sure.
Uh, all these next things, it's telling me, A, B, and C, you got money appropriated already for that, is that correct?
Correct, all these items have been budgeted already.
All right, so, uh, first, you want to do them one at a time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, consideration of bid for new playground equipment for the city park.
When we were going through the capital process last year, the number one item that Tim focused on when asked the question, "What is the single biggest thing that you can do that will have the greatest positive impact on this community?", his answer was a playset. We have looked, and he has found one on a national contract, so there, this satisfies our bid process. If you look at the pictures, you can see this is a very large unit, and it rivals any unit that you will find in any of your surrounding cities, and will provide a much needed, you know, it's been so long since the park has had a new piece of equipment that everybody can enjoy, and this was his wish for it. In addition with this, the surface of the ground is ADA approved, so we will meet requirements there and allow more, you know, make sure that we have everybody, uh, an opportunity to go in and enjoy the playset. As you said, these monies were already budgeted, we're pulling monies from two different departments to make this happen, one is from the capital fund that was scheduled for this, and the other is from ADA repair and maintenance items to cover the cost of this, so our request is that you would approve that this purchase be allowed.
I hear a motion, please.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion, Mr. Gribble, got a second?
Thank you.
Second, Mr. Knight, roll call, Mr. T.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The next thing on the agenda is consideration of bid for repair of Fire Hall Number Two on Smith Street. You got anything you need to say, Mr. Reagan, before we...
Actually, Chief Randy's in.
The Chief Randy, I know you'll talk.
Can't we get started?
The pictures speak volumes.
That's what I was gonna say. How, how, how...
They're uglier than Mark.
The pictures that you've given us, uh, yeah.
Ain't that pretty?
I'm appalled that we let, I wouldn't let my whoever stay at this place, these pictures, I wish we had them on a big screen, they're enough that I don't even need a discussion. How, how could it have gotten to this?
Well, just...
This is number two?
This stays due, and, uh, the, you know, it's just, it's been, it's been, uh, coming for a long time, and, uh, we simply, there was no way to, no funds to repair it, so...
Well, I understand where you're coming from, that's why I appreciate when you get into this controversy about whether to do or not to do, you know, you damn if you do and you damn if you don't, but you can see right here, you need to do it.
Well, it's a, you know, it's a public building, and, uh, anyone's certainly welcome to, to come and see it, and you're kind of ashamed sometimes when, when the public does come in and see their building in such a shape, but, you know, there's only so many, you can just Band-Aid up something so much, so, when, uh, I was asked to be over this bid process, we had, and, and I'm sure you uns have it in front of you, uh, we had three contractors bid this job, Andrews Contractors and RLS and McSpadden Contractors, and, uh, you know, I was, this was the first time I'd ever been involved with this, so I met with each of these gentlemen, and, uh, I told each one of them exactly how far we needed to go and what we wanted to do, and, uh, so that they would be bidding apples and apples, you know, instead of this one getting information this one didn't get, because we did want it to be a fair process, and, uh, all of these bidders, all these contractors, as, as far as I know, are very competent, uh, you know, I don't know any of them personally, but, uh, you have in front of you their bids, and, uh, you know, that's the reason for the bid process, so, you know, we're just looking forward to moving forward and, uh, getting our building.
Have you satisfied the quality of work, Mark, I mean, that, I mean, when you've talked to them, you're satisfied with...
Well, I mean, they were all very professional, you know, uh, I'm sure that each one of them would do a, do a fine job, of course, it's up to you guys to look and choose one, uh, you know, this is the reason for the bid process, you know, I don't have any preference, I, I mean, this is, uh, I didn't know any of the gentlemen, and, uh, so...
Is this Fire Hall Number Two?
It is, yes.
Of the city park, yeah.
Right. But, uh, you know, uh...
McSpadden's done a lot of things, New Moore, uh, Memorial out here, Lincoln Avenue, uh...
Yeah, they're, they're a well, well-known company with a good reputation, and, you know, the bids...
Quality, quality product.
The bids are there, and, uh, that's, uh, that's yours is a job, I guess, so to speak, but however it goes, and whichever one ends deemed necessary to receive the bid, we're, we're looking forward to working with them, and, uh, we're looking forward to getting Fire Station Number Two back up to, for something that the, the public can be proud of again, and, uh, just, I'll leave it in your guys' hands now, and thank you so much for, for making this possible, it's long overdue, and, uh, certainly appreciate it.
I appreciate you feeling like that, so people understand.
I do, I feel that way, I mean it, I mean it sincerely, and like I said, uh, all these companies, as far as I know, are very reputable, I know Mr. McSpadden's company is, uh, and, uh, I don't know any of them personally, as I said, so if you uns have any questions that you need to ask of me, then please feel free, and I'll try my best to...
I hear a motion, please.
Wait, wait, can I, I need to...
Yes, okay, go ahead.
I see the work here, this, we got the, the ALT number one and ALT number two, and they had a $4,500 on it. And from what I see here, it's, or is this something up and beyond that you need? The paint interior truck bays and replace exterior plywood soffit at living quarters of vinyl soffit. I see there bid, but there's also an add-on.
Mr. Fancher, I can't explain that. I had asked them each to bid this in, in increments with the priority bid being on the living quarters, and then I asked them to bid the stairwell and the, the canopy at the rear. I asked them to build that as one priority, and then a bid for painting of the truck room and the soffit for the exterior as a separate bid. I think all of those total, added together, the total you have is for the complete turnaround job. The base, the base is simply the, the living quarters. I, I think Mr. McSpadden's bid was actually the one that was bid precisely as I ask it to be. Even though I did understand the other ones, and they weren't wrong, it was just a little different way of presenting it. But the totals, the totals that you have there includes all of those alternates. The, the bottom line total is to do the complete job.
Well, even after you do all their alternatives on there, they're still lower than you get it. All the other two projects from RLS builders and Andrews. So if you look at dollars and cents and the reputation, I think this man brings the table, you know, that's, that's the one we need to go with.
You know his work anyway, because it's been a lot of years, you know. They've got a good name for the company. Like I said, I don't know where, we just need to get a motion and.
I'm going to reward the contractor.
Okay. The motion been made by Mr. Gribble, I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hansel? Okay, Ms. Tane?
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. We really appreciate it. I know the firefighters do, and we're looking forward to having yous over in some time in the very near future and check out your new fire department.
You said it's free mail?
I did. Yeah. I think, I think that would certainly, I think that'd certainly be fair.
We appreciate the job y'all do, too. We, I appreciate that. The next thing on the agenda is consideration of bid for the fire department. Mr. Reagan, you got anything to say about that?
That's actually, that's actually for, for a car.
Right, I know that.
That's for a car. Our Crown Vic that we bought in 1999, the transmission is almost gone. It, it's like if you don't push the gas real hard, it'll go. But anyway, it went on Gov. Deals today by Rocky. So what we'll be, we'll be replacing in 1999 Crown Victoria.
Okay. I, that's one of the things, you know, when y'all tell me you appreciate, and the people appreciate, the people in the city, they least appreciate what they're trying, the people see maybe sometime before their money's gone, they don't have a harder problem with it. And I appreciate the job y'all do. I hear a motion that we.
Is this in the budget?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion been made by Mr. Hansel, second by Mr. Fancher, roll call, Ms. Tane.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the job.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Reagan. Mr. Hicks, have you got the, the, that fault heater, has it, has it got in yet or anything?
Yes, they had a little problem with it, and they took it back, and we expect to get it back next week.
All right. Let me know when you do. I've got a few projects for you. Thank you. That, that'll pay for itself in a short amount of time.
Yes.
And that's some of the things that people appreciate the city's doing for them, or that everybody's doing for them, not the city.
The city's permitted.
Well, thank you.
I think everybody should take the nickel tour of what Parks and Recreation have done this winter. I mean, it's, if you haven't gone around, starting up to the East Point and all the way to the park, you ought to go and look what those guys have done with very little money. They've, they've done it with hard work.
Appreciate your job, oh, you're going to, Tim, and, don't have to clean up your car, Tim. That's the biggest job I've heard in city, about your car. We understand that, don't you? Mr. Hill took care of that today. All right, we got any?
He's talking about I was attacked by birds. It's odd, but very, look at my scars, Phil, that you was attacked by birds.
I understood.
Explain, you.
It's sort of a side joke, okay? You got any comments from the citizens?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I'm sorry I didn't get to on the agenda, but I had a, a funding request to make of the city council. I am, been working trying to bring a new program for our senior citizens here in Cock County. It's a, it's not a new program. We're just trying, I'm just trying to replicate a program that's already existed. Blount County, Claiborne County, there's a program in Tellico Village, and it's a transportation program for our senior citizens. And it's a big initiative for Governor Haslam to get rural communities to, to start these transportation programs for the senior citizens in their county. Our program will allow seniors to get rides to the grocery store, to wherever they need to go. We call them essential trips. So, well, it's been a big push with the aging industry to allow, to, to get seniors to stay in their home as long as they're healthy and able to. But a lot of times, they cannot drive anymore, and if they can't drive, they are isolated. And a lot of times, they are cut off from the community. So a transportation program like this will open up our community to services and activities, and it makes it within their reach. So we have, I have gotten, I will be able to get a $10,000 grant, and I need a $5,000 match, and I have secured $25,000, $2,500 of the match. I want to ask the city council for $2,500. I have some information here, and I would just like you to consider some supporting this program for our community.
Ms. Corley, I was going to tell you personally, I really appreciate the job you do for the senior citizens. I know it gets frustrating for you the way things are. I appreciate the job you do. I think there's been big efforts and big strides made for what you're trying to do, and I appreciate that. I think maybe whenever you get ready to turn it in, to take to the workshop, and put it in there, and aim to see what we've got, where we're at. Is that okay with y'all?
I'm going to hand each one of you one, and you can pass one to me.
Thank you.
I was going to ask you a question. I read in the Newport Plain Talk, a letter to the editor, a lady, she was critical of the council in our vote about the distillery, and she said that, something caught my eye, that they, senior citizens doesn't have a home. What do y'all consider home now?
A permanent place.
Well, I know that. What do you all do now? Do you go to the churches? Do y'all go to?
Oh, we, we are, we have, we use church. We borrow spaces for activities, and we utilize a lot of space at the Seven Day Advantage Church, the South Side Baptist Church, First Baptist, I mean, not First Baptist, but First Methodist, and Hartford Trinity Baptist, I think. So we, we just move, we have activities in those locations. It's not really good for our attendance, because seniors try, tend to get set in their way, so they, they don't like to venture out.
On a good day, how many people will attend a senior citizens event?
Probably about 25, 30. That's, that's a good day. That's when it's not raining, sun is shining, it's not cold outside.
Appreciate your job.
Thank you.
I'm speaking foul language. Is anybody, okay, Mr. Heffernan?
I've seen you guys had some backlash about the distillery, and I just wanted to express gratitude and support for attempting to bring new businesses and opportunities to this community. I'm a younger generation person that lives here, and I just wanted to say I really appreciate it. And I've, I've seen a lot of my friends graduate college and school, and they all have had to move off to find work, and we want to come back here and work, but there's not that much opportunity. So I hope you guys keep continuing that path to create opportunities like that and other jobs for us. So thank you all.
I appreciate that thought, Nicole. You damn if you do and you damn if you don't. Maybe that wasn't our first choice, but that's been our only choice for a long time, and I think this, whether you like it or don't like it, it's going to make some things move downtown. It's coming in the pack. I appreciate, I appreciate you.
That could lead to all kind of growth potentials down here. I mean, I'm not saying that alcohol is the way to go, but plenty of potential. This is a beautiful area. You've got I-81, I-40 railroad that runs right down. Why don't we have manufacturing jobs or anything like that here?
You know, one of the things that's been talking to me this week about, and they've heard it yourself, they've got five or six different companies, five or six different, they can't give people, you know, he said there's not any jobs here. Well, a lot of people don't want a job. They want a job, they don't want work, and they can't pay some drug bills. And that's Dollywood over there, Bremmore, all that, they said, this place can't, they can't fill their jobs. So I mean, they're.
Who wants to work for $8.25 an hour?
Right, I understand. But you could get it, I understand that.
But. People better pay. But I, I want to thank you all for doing a good job. Keep it up.
Appreciate you saying that. I do.
I want to add a note to that.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah. During my planning period at Colby High School, I went out and researched every, I wish it was the Pepsi-Cola bottle plant myself, or the Mountain Dew plant, but it's not. I went out and researched every distillery that's operational in the state of Tennessee today. There's 20 of them, and they've all been very open in about their numbers. Their, this, these 20 distilleries from one end of the state, that's basically from Nashville up to Tri-Cities, offer 40, over 4,100 jobs. The average, the mean of the people that I got to talk to said their average salary for a non-administrative executive is $14.50 an hour. And just to do a couple of other things, there are an old smoky distillery that's over in the Sevier Canal, is now employing 198 people. Guess what? Forty-two of them are from Cock County. Forty-two. I've, I've talked to people at the Jack Daniels distributorship who have 368 employees. I asked them what type of corporate citizen they are, and they said, if Jack Daniels folded, we have folded as well. They have their own fire department, they have their own security department, so forth and so on. And then I also read in the paper today, and you, the people in Lexington, Kentucky are jumping at the news that the Brown Foreman gets a new brand of bourbon, which is a parent, the parent company of Jack Daniels, which is going to create a $22 million investment in the next five years in Woodford County, right outside of Louisville, excuse me, outside of Lexington. 117 acres purchased to do this. Once again, I wish it was the Coca-Cola plant that's coming in here, but unfortunately, it's, it's not. Kentucky works on the Bourbon Tourism Bill, talking about all the stuff that's going on. And I've talked to people, Jack Daniels, they have an extra 400,000 people that come to Lynchburg every year just for their barbecue festivals. 45, 50,000 people at a time. Now, is this going to be a Jack Daniels? I don't know. But just like Barry said, we, we got to roll the dice. And I'll, I'll add with this, end with this. March 24th, 2016 edition of Knoxville News and Home. Cock County, which at number 94 out of 95 had worse health incomes than any other county except rural Grundy County. 40% of Cock County children live in poverty. And after doing some more research on this, on the website of Knoxville, guess who's number one? Newport. Now, is this going to be the end-all, tell-all for the future? No, but today going to start. And I, I, I hated that the county didn't jump on board. I understand the reasons why. Like I said, I'll reiterate one more time, I wish it was the, anything else but a bourbon plant, or excuse me, a moonshine plant, but, you know, what, they're not knocking on the doors now, they're exit 432 and 435 to get into this place, and I just feel like it's time to roll some dice. Whatever that is.
I'd love to see some of our visitors here. Y'all, glad to have y'all here. Has anybody else got anything? Citizens calling in? I hear none. Did I hear a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and second. All, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.